Thank you, President King and members of council. We just want to kind of follow up on our conversation from last time and bring some updates to you on Northam, kind of where we've been and what you're seeing in the capital improvement budget this year. So we just wanted to start by kind of giving a little background on the progress so far. So as we shared in the updates in the presentation a couple of weeks ago, Phase One has been completed, which was the stormwater improvements. That work wrapped up in April of this year. It was all done this winter. That project actually came in 20% under budget, so just kind of showing the first phase there. A large portion of that is anytime we bring a project to you in the capital improvement plan, we're including usually about a 10% contingency on the project to deal with any unforeseen conditions that come up during the work. We were very fortunate on Phase One to really not use that contingency at all. It went very smoothly overall, and we didn't have to use any of these additional funds that were budgeted. Phase Two was the next part of the project of the vision plan that we turned attention to earlier this year. We completed construction drawings on that project back in July to go out to bid over the summer, opened up bids in August of this year, and at that time, the bids were about 17% over the budgeted amount. It was that time that we determined it was best to delay the project, kind of reevaluate and determine how to reallocate the budget on the Northam Park Vision Plan as proposed to you in the capital improvement plan. One thing we did want to point out to kind of highlight on where we've been with Phase Two is that even with increase over budget, we're also making strides to kind of rein in the scope on that project to what was absolutely essential. So we did include a quick plan up here to just kind of remind you, it was a very minimal building, kind of updating the uses that were already in the park. So it was providing a new check-in office for the tennis courts, a very small locker room that had one shower in each locker room, two year-round restrooms on the park side, and then storage to really accommodate what's needed for the tennis courts, the general park use, as well as the athletic activities that take place in the park. One thing we also did want to point out, as you look up here, you know, originally it was a little bit larger building, we kept kind of reducing it to the absolute minimum that was necessary. The original plan also included an overhead structure in there to kind of serve as a park shelter. That eventually became pergola to still provide some shade, but not really the coverage that we wanted from a park shelter. And actually, in the final bid that was over budget, that was included as an alternate. So it was actually an open space there in the middle, would not have even been covered between the two buildings. So just kind of highlighting the efforts that were made to kind of keep that on track as we were moving through. Where we currently are is on Phase Three. We have wrapped up the construction drawings on that phase and is actually out to bid at the moment. We are going to open up bids for that on December 16th. We are scheduled to begin work in early spring. We are allowing 180 days for the construction on that project with the goal of having seed and sod down by August of next year, so we can really start having the recovery occur next fall. In the 2023 budget, and we'll highlight this a little more later on, we are asking for a 25% increase on that. We have been working very closely with our engineers. So far, the cost estimates are looking very good. We feel, you know, confident that we have it headed in the right direction, but we are still in kind of an unpredictable bid market right now. We are identifying this as one of the top priorities for the park, just because it is really a continuation of what began in Phase One, fully restoring those fields, making them playable, really bringing them up to the standard that we expect for the city. And then the image at the bottom, just to highlight the area that we're talking about, that is the west fields that are kind of circled in the dash line on there on the plan. So to kind of highlight the transition, we put together this chart to kind of show the transition from the 2020 vision plan up through what you're seeing in the 2023 CIP and kind of track the changes on there. Just to highlight a few of the things we're showing on there, we already talked about a little bit the increase on the west athletic fields. The east athletic fields, you see, we're showing a 55% increase. We wanted to kind of highlight, in addition to kind of catching up with the current escalation we're seeing, the new, the current CIP also pushes this project out from 2023 to 2026. We're actually adding in an additional three-years escalation in there as we've tried to reshuffle the phases into achievable pieces. Kind of lumping together, the general park improvements and the portion of the building that would be dedicated to general park use, we are seeing about a 20% increase in that. And then trying to kind of break out separately, the tennis courts and the portion of the building that's dedicated to tennis uses, we're seeing about a 34% increase in that. One caveat we'll kind of put with that, you know, as you're doing the budgeting estimates on this, it's difficult to kind of do a super clean line. You know, if we need a water line for the tennis building, it's also going to serve the general park building. So there's obviously some shared overlap in there, but we've tried to kind of put together the best picture to kind of give you an idea of the breakdown. This results in about a 29% overall increase for the phases. Again, these are budgeting numbers. We're doing these based on the input from the consultants we've been working with, what we've been seeing on other bids, but this is fairly consistent with what we've seen on these type of projects overall recently. So what's this translate into in the 2023 capital improvement plan? The numbers you're looking at up here and the phases is what we showed in the budget that was presented. Phase Three is the west athletic fields that are out to bid right now. We did, in working with the tennis advisory committee out at Northam, put in some budget to explore the possibility of renovating six courts independently of the original phase, which would have been the building in three courts. The thought is that as we reviewed the bids with the contractors that bid on the job, we saw the tennis numbers, though higher, were more consistent with what we're seeing. So we thought there was an opportunity if we could kind of do a standalone tennis project, be able to move forward with making some of those improvements before replacing the building. The one big caveat on that is we would need to determine the feasibility of that. We touched on this a little bit last week, but what we want to make sure is that we don't create any dangerous situations out there where half the courts are improved, they're at a different elevation, transitioning to the old courts, and that it's not safe to play on would kind of be number one. Number two with that, we want to make sure that if we move forward with any court renovations at this time, that we're not taking two steps forward and one step back, that we're not doing something that we're going to have to go back and redo later on, or that's going to add additional costs for future phases. So if we move forward with this project in 2023, we'd really be looking at this as a two-step process. Step one, identifying, is it feasible, updating the cost estimate, and then step two would actually be moving forward with a detailed design on that. In the 2023 CIP, we have created a new revised Phase Four. You'll see a pretty significant increase over where we had Phase Four before, with the current budget being a little over $4 million. This is because it's now a much more expanded scope than what was originally included in the Phase Four. So at this time, that we're proposing is this was when we could replace the building, renovate the additional six courts, and handle the other additional site improvements around that portion of the park, which would really consist of reworking the walks around the tennis complex. One of the things we heard during the vision plan process is that people felt the tennis courts were kind of a barrier, they wanted to have the park feel more uniform, and a big part of that would be providing people easy paths to walk around and get around to all parts of the park, including around the tennis complex. And then the final phase in 2026 would be going back and renovating the east athletic fields, doing a scope that's very similar to what we have out to bid right now on the west athletic fields. And just a reminder on that, it consists of a regrading of the fields to improve drainage, installation of under drains, and then installation of an irrigation system, as well as new seed and topsoil throughout the project, kind of giving ourselves the best situation to get playable, durable, multi-use fields in the park. One of the things we kind of wanted to look at is what are the flexibility on the different phases? So what you're looking up here is split a little bit differently than the last chart in that we tried to separate into the different kind of scopes of the project. So before, we were kind of combining, it might be some tennis work, some general park work, some athletic field work, but here, we've kind of split it up by the different uses and want to just kind of highlight the flexibility that we saw. And the first thing to kind of notice, the west athletic fields we have up there in red, we feel like this is a pretty critical project at this point. It's really a continuation of the work that's already been done. In order to take advantage of the stormwater improvements already out there, we really need to do this next phase that would add in the additional area drains, the under drains, and really make that area perform the way it should, as well as restoring the areas that have already been disturbed by the stormwater installation. And yellow are portions of the project that are flexible, but will need to be addressed at some point. You'll see the main focus on that is the building. You know, the building's not in great condition out there, there's cracks, there's wood rotting. At some point, that building will need to be replaced. We're not seeing it as, you know, any kind of dangerous situation or immediate need, but we just are acknowledging at some point, we will need to make a decision on the future of that building in the park. The scope and timing, there is some flexibility in that, but just something that we definitely need to include in our long-term plans. And finally, in green, you see the tennis courts and really the east athletic fields. We've kind of identified these areas as our most adjustable, most flexible. They're performing their, you know, they're performing the way they should right now. The tennis courts are usable, the athletic fields on the east side are usable, but we definitely recognize areas for improvement on both those facilities. So kind of in summary, pulling together, overall, we're seeing about a 29% increase versus the numbers we first started looking at in 2020 on the vision plan. This results in about a $1.5 million increase in the overall kind of general park improvements and about 840,000 specific to tennis improvements. And we are suggesting that the remaining phases could be completed over a four-year period. So with that, we do have some information on operations.
Good evening. I'll go through a bit of operation data that we have collected over several years, so that's to try to paint a picture of the history of our, of the tennis court usage. So this chart shows our past membership from 2012 to 2022. A membership is anybody who buys a season pass, a tennis pass, or the combined tennis and aquatic pass. So it's all combined here, where we have our residents listed, as well as the non-resident usage. What you're seeing here is from 2012 to 2018, there was a consistent decline each year. Then starting in 2019, our annual total did increase each year, with the exception of 2020, which was our COVID year, which was an anomaly for everything. But, so with that, we do have seen a trend and an increase since that point in time. As we go through our tennis visits, past member visits, it's each time a past member scans in, and then daily admission is people who pay a daily rate. I will say that our, our structure for our daily admission is really more of a trial basis to really encourage the season pass sales. So a person is limited to only a few visits before they were meant to purchase a pass. Our combined usage, so the tennis courts are used for a variety of types of play. So the first two are what I showed on the last slide, the tennis pass visits and daily admission. Those would be used if you wanted to play casually, or if you're in a league and have league play. If you look over to the right, you'll see where our courts, starting in 2020, one of the advantages we did come out of the COVID year is we went into a reservation system. So our courts are reservable on a one-and-a-half-hour increment, and we have a set schedule. So within that, there's nine blocks of one-and-a-half-hour increments on weekdays and eight blocks on weekends. So that allows players to know that they have a court available, reserve the court, and their, the people they're going to play with can show up at that time and play. So that's your normal casual or league play. We also have lessons, which we have between private lessons and group clinics, and this is all ages from juniors, including adults, that take place in our lesson play. The league opponents, so the Northam is one of the host sites for the Greater Columbus Tennis Association. When people play league play, you're playing people from another court. So they're, we're the host team, and we have visitors, just as when the Northam players may visit another site for an away match. So we don't have them scan in or check in, so based on the estimated amount of plays, about 1,000 visitors that are also on our courts. And then the social events, and I'll talk about that in a few slides, is about 300 people during this past season. So collectively, what that equates to is during our core season of what mean day at the end of April through Labor Day, is about 99 players per day, averages out to a little bit over eight per day per court. The courts are open September and October, but play really starts to scale back as many players join indoor clubs. So it's really not a true comparison of the amount of play we have as we do in the core season. So that's why we separated that out for the 99 average.
Debbie, can I interrupt you and just dive into that, that 8.25 average players per court per day?
Correct.
Is that, if there's a doubles match going on, that's four players at one time. Say there's two doubles matches scheduled for one court per day, that's the extent of the usage of one court, two doubles matches, three hours?
That is a correct analogy. If you take it at this high-level number, yes.
If it's, if it's singles play, it's four singles matches for six hours of the, of the day that it's open.
Correct.
The, the real number lies somewhere in between there, probably, with single, a mix of singles and doubles.
Correct, it does. And, and we do know that there's some times that there might be people who don't scan in in a hurry to get to a court because of that one-and-a-half-hour time block, it's like your time is on, so you want to hurry up and get out to the court to play during that block. So there may be, that, that top number of 9,000 may be a little bit short, but, you know, nonetheless, your analogy is correct. And if we take the total, average it out, divide it by the number of courts, it equals that eight people playing per court per day. So that would be two, two groups of four players on each court a day. So it's per court, so you have all 12 courts.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just trying to do the math and figure out.
Yeah, so you multiply it by 12 courts and by 126 days is the data we use, knowing that we were closed 10 days for rain during that time period.
Gotcha. So, well, I'll come back, I'll come back with questions.
Okay. All right, so the membership socials. So the Northam Park Tennis Advisory Committee is a volunteer committee that helps facilitate some of the play at the courts, and they coordinate monthly socials, and it's usually a topic, a themed event that has tournament play, as well as food and fellowship and social gathering. This is something that in surveys with our members, was understanding they wanted to have that atmosphere and the sense of place, not just, you know, a place for casual play. And since they have started these, they have been very well received. They offer them June, July, and August of each year, and this year, there were, trying to get off of your mouth, I'm sorry, 2,000, I'm sorry, 325 people attending these. So this is starting to, this is when they started, we also started to see some of those upticks in, in membership.
Those aren't unique attendees, are they? Those aren't unique attendees. Those could be the same 110 people to each, at three events.
Correct. Yes, correct. Okay. For the juniors program, this is another part of our tennis program. This was 248 individual people, individual juniors, which are youth, that anybody under 18 that would play in the lesson program, and 240 of those 248 are a Burlington residence. Of those 248, 24 are members. Juniors that play at the competitive level, it is required to be a membership. Juniors, the youth beginners that are just trying out the sport for the first time, a membership is not required. In working with the tennis advisory committee, we realized that as a, to reduce a barrier for someone to try playing tennis, a family's probably not going to pay for an annual membership and then find out the child doesn't like the sport. So this is one where it's not required to have a membership for that, for that, to be in that program. Then we get into the operating budget, and what we'll see here is, you know, how the revenue, how it has changed. We have had fee increases typically every three years, the rates have increased. Our expenses, it's a pretty bare bones, you have your staff and your court maintenance materials. Then we have our, the net operating expense. So you'll see where, as our memberships have increased, the actual subsidy has decreased over the last several years within the operations. One thing to note, if you look at the operating budget, you will see that we're, our operating budget is forecasting a $28,000 deficit. That's because we budget for every potential staff hour. If we have rainouts, or, you know, times where we might only have one employee, not two employees working, we're budgeted to cover all the staff that may be potentially necessary, even though we, as you can see by the track, we would not spend all of those staff hours. But, but the budget does include that. So that's a summary of the operations, and we can, if you want to have any questions regarding that before we go to the overall summary back to capital. Yes?
Thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't ask first. I think it's important to respect the.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Curious if the, there, so when we see a subtle drop in enrollment, and in this case, it's been consistent, and we continue to see it even after the pandemic, have, what is the feedback you're getting? Is any of that related to the facility or to reserving blocks of time? Has either of that impacted?
We did a survey of members at the beginning of 2019 was the last survey we did, to anybody that was a member in the previous five years. We wanted to know if they were continuing to be a member, if they didn't continue, why did they not continue, and to basically understand what drives membership. And what we found were court conditions was, was one element, availability of courts as well. The reservation system has truly helped with the court availability, because you know when you get there, you can play. People don't have time to wait, like, oh, it'll be an hour, and your group can play. So that has really helped with that. The socials have helped create that, the more congenial type of an atmosphere within the membership. And then what we have been doing are subtle operational improvements to help improve the court, court conditions with irrigation repairs or repairs to the service building. What we can do in operating, we have done some of that. The conditions of the building are beyond really what we can do with operating dollars, but those, showing that small investment has helped with attracting members. And the members talk to each other, they, you know, people who, we have had some people who would join Northam because they can get into league play at Northam, where they might not be able to at another court. So being able to be on a league team is another driver.
Thanks.
Sure.
So you heard from people that left the, the club that the court conditions were causing them to leave?
That was part of the.
Any idea where they went as a result? Did they give up tennis altogether? Did they join somewhere else?
We did ask in general if they joined other clubs, and some of them have either stopped playing, joined indoor clubs, and there's a mix of that, of where they have gone. We, we also did an interesting analysis where we saw, we looked at all the members in 2018 and deter, in 2019, and we actually determined that even though the change that you'll see on this chart shows basically 50 numbers more, we actually had about 100 members who didn't rejoin and 150 that did. There's like more play in it than what you see, it's not just 50 didn't rejoin. There's new people coming, more people going, for a variety of reasons. And it was really interesting to see that, that there's a lot more movement in the, in the data than just the net number. So with that, that's what we tried to gauge and determine it, and, you know, people, people want the activities, the socials, the leagues, the availability of courts, and improved conditions are primary drivers.
Mr. Williams? Several years ago, when I was sitting on the far end down here, I remember thinking, we had some members that were rolling off council and they're in their last term, and I said, let's just get this tennis jump-started, let's get it done now, because we had unanimous consensus on council that it was a priority. And I've always thought that the support for tennis has shifted with the winds. Sometimes council's for it, sometimes they're not, but at that point in time, everyone was for it, and I wanted to get it moving. I remember, you, you show a two, two and a half million dollar starting price there, but I seem to remember when we first started talking about it, it was $750,000 is what we were going to be putting into tennis. So I'm wondering what made that 750 number move up to over $4 million?
There was an analysis that was done in 2000, early part of 2016, and that was base renovations of the courts. What this is proposed to do is replace the irrigation system, raise the courts up six inches so that you have a better base for them to play on, so they're above the drainage line. And then also, replace all of the fencing. So there's a lot more infrastructure involved than, than the base that we had before in that earlier proposal. And then on top of that is replacing the service building as well, that was not many of the costs prior.
Yeah, I mean, I agree, $4 million is a lot of money, but the question is, what's, what's somewhere in between? You know, are the, are the fences necessary? Are, you know, with, with the drainage fixed, do we need to raise the courts? Is there somewhere in between that we can land?
And that we would have to explore to see what other options are maybe besides the complete replacement. We were looking at this when we did the vision plan of correcting all the problems, particularly with drainage and, and the aged infrastructure that we have.
Ms. Adams?
So with the consultants that we talked about, is this part of the MSA sport scope?
MSA is a firm that did the original vision plan, and then now, as we go into the detailed design for each phase, for each phase, we select a firm, and OHM is the firm that has been working on the detail phase that you'll see for Phase Two and Phase Three.
Do any of them have sub consultants that specialize in tennis?
They do. Both teams have had, particularly clay tennis courts. They have, both during the vision plan and during this, and they have been out to our sites and directly looked at our facility.
Have they weighed in on the different alternates or different options for this project then as it's evolved?
Yes, they have. And, and that's where, as Jeff was saying, the, some of the costs that we have for the tennis are a little bit more in line than what we have for the building. The building is where we saw a lot more of a cost increase.
Yeah, I think for the tennis courts in particular, you know, we've been studying options on them. You know, one of the first things we looked at, we heard about how great the courts are at Sayota Country Club, well, they have an underground irrigation system, which is really nice, gives you great control over the courts, but it's also, I think it was $250,000 more. So we looked at things like that and determined, well, we can function pretty well with an above-ground sprinkler system. So we've been looking at things like that. And just to kind of add on to, with the numbers that are in 2016, one big issue we found with those is that they weren't, they did not include prevailing wage. So it's kind of like, from the start, there was a big chunk that wasn't even included in that. So those were very conceptual numbers, just some from informal conversations. We've done a ton of work, a ton of research since those were the numbers.
I wanted to ask, when there are those leagues playing, is there usually reciprocity agreement that we get to play there and they get to play here? Is that kind of thing a factor?
I am sorry, did you say reciprocity from courts to facility for the facility?
The, the league play?
Only for league play. Like you, someone who's a visitor would not be able to come to our court and play casually without paying the daily fee or being a member.
I also have understood that the court type in our courts are a prestigious thing, it's a rare type in the region. Can you talk some about that?
So clay tennis courts are, are rare. Mainly, it's softer on knee, so it's really more, it's a softer surface to play on. So it's more desired for people who are looking for something for longevity and playing. So with that, there are, I want to say, four other municipalities in the state of Ohio that operate clay tennis courts. There are obviously some private clubs that operate as well. So it is, it is rare, and it's, and the cost is because of the cost of maintaining the courts and the play and rolling it every day, where, you know, here in UA, we have many asphalt tennis courts that are free to use and open for play, but it's, it's not the same playing experience or the same operating cost for us. So that's, that's where the fee structure comes in.
And has there been evolution in those materials to make better things that don't require as much maintenance? Is that something that evolves at all? How does that work?
We have not really defined any evolution of the clay material. It's, you know, it, it is something that you have to have the right level of moisture. If it's too dry, it play, you know, it doesn't play well, and we have an irrigation system that was too wet, you have to let it dry out and roll it. So it is something that you have a lot of play of, you know, within the water levels and the maintenance that we have to do on a regular basis, and that's every court, so, you know, throughout the day.
But there's not much.
Yeah, I mean, there's really only, you know, one source for the clay material stuff. I mean, it, it's a very unique surface. I mean, it's, it's very different than an asphalt public court that's just out there and open to the public. I mean, it's not something that, you know, we can just kind of turn our back on and have it still be sustainable. I mean, it, it takes the rolling, the watering, I mean, it's, it's, you know, it's intensive to, to have it before.
Thank you.
Mr. Wacaseen, Jita?
Thank you, President King. I want to, I want to talk a little bit about page 17, this operating budget. 2020, 2020 aside, which was the pandemic, it seems even before that, we were operating at losses, right? Agreed when being in 2019. And we seem to be bouncing back a little bit here, given your estimate here in 2022. Can you talk to me about, is that purely the path, the, the cost structure?
So the main thing that we have done differently, starting in 2020, was the So the main thing that we have done differently starting in 2020 was the block reservation system. So one advantage that we have is we know, particularly in the evening, if there's going to be any play or not. Now, we still stay open in case there's somebody who wants to walk in, pay a daily admission. But at a certain time, we know that we can close. And with that, that, that those dollars add up over time. And I think it's also just being astute to know, based on the weather of the day. Like, you know, some days you can wait it out and take, take time to dry out the courts. And some days you know that the rain was so, so intensive, you're, you're not going to be able to play that day. So being a little bit more astute on it, if we're going to open or not. So I think what you'll see in 21 and 22 is much more, much more cost management on both expenses, but particularly on our payroll expenses. Now, I would say with a caveat with that is we also had a, an increase in all of our wages this year. So, so we actually spent more per hour, but utilized, like I said, we had, I think, 10 days where we were completely closed this past year. So that plus some, or, you know, a lot of different rain delays or so, particularly we would have those. The cost of maintaining the courts has been fairly consistent with as far as material. But we've also had our membership increases and price increases with the membership. So revenue goes up twofold with that.
I heard you talk a little bit about these, the clay courts. Are, are prices comparable to what clay playing courts are for, for these passes? Do, do we know that? Do, I guess I'm trying to understand if our, the revenue we're generating, right, is par the course for what we are offering residents. 2029 aside in terms of the survey and the, the state of our courts and those kind of things. Are we comparable with our fees?
And, because that is a very difficult comparison to do because of having truly comparable facilities. So there is champions in Columbus. Theirs, their cost structure is much different because of the, it's actually operated by a private entity. It's owned by the city of Columbus, but operated. And with that, they don't have the staffing hours. It's not, it's more volunteer run than staff run. Then we look at some other facilities, we look at city of Cincinnati. Theirs is a little bit of a different cost structure, but they're running all their own internal leagues. As opposed to, you know, being a member of a larger regional league as we are. So the comparison is, there is not really an equal comparison. So we really are more cost driven on our cost recovery method is where we are, our fee structure.
Have we had, I guess I'm, I'm curious what our tennis community or how our tennis community feels about some of these, the, the cost of these projects? It causes me pause, right? We're not going to recover these costs, certainly not how we're operating, right? We recognize it's a gem of the community, but to the tune of what, right? I, I look at something like Sunny 95 Park, where we have the public-private partnership there. Conversations around that with our community on how, if in fact, this is something we want to maintain in our community, how do we get there? What kind of conversations are we having around that? How can we drive those conversations?
So there, there's a few there. First of all, you're absolutely right. This is only showing your operating cost of which it's not a 100% cost recovery. Then you add in the cost of capital and with that, that, you know, the operating cost would not, would not cover that. We have had conversations over time with our, of the tennis community about potentially having some private fundraising that may help offset the cost. We haven't got to the level of detail as to how much, what percentage they, we would want them to strive to raise or what amount they could raise. Mainly because our capital costs have been a bit of a moving target over the last few years. So I think once we define a level, we can, we can have more detailed conversations with that group.
Ms. Burris?
Thank you, Council President King. I had another question about, let me see if I can find it. Oh, so going back to the flexibility slide, can you clarify for those green items? When you say most adjustable or flexible, you don't mean flexible as in the difference between doing it versus not doing it? You mean flexibility in terms of the time in which action must take place? Is that correct?
To the point that, that, you know, for instance, the tennis courts are completely playable right now. You know what I mean? We're just, as you've seen on the, on the operation charts, are being used on a regular basis. Certainly they're in a condition where we could keep doing that for quite a time. You know what I mean? There's no safety concerns on the court. There's no, nothing making them where they're completely unplayable. Likewise, on the east athletic fields, you know, the grass is in poor condition, but we don't have any safety concerns over there. We're still, you know, having football and baseball use over there. So really it's a judgment call on whether or not we really want to improve them and take them to that next level or if we're kind of comfortable with where they are today for the amenities that are in green. And then likewise, we could adjust the scope, you know? Getting back to Councilmember Lynch's question, yeah, there probably is an area in between, you know, can, can we value engineer? I mean, that's always something we could look at. Could we, you know, do we need to replace the fence? Or, you know, where, where can we make those cuts to make some improvements short of doing a complete and full replacement?
And this is kind of getting to kind of the fundamental of where we are in the process, which is, you know, we need feedback from council in terms of what budget you want us working toward. So we've been very lucky in this community that we've been in a position where oftentimes we're able to say, hey, this is a really important project. We're going to do the project to whatever level it needs to get done and we'll move money around. And for the last, I don't know, six years, we've, we've been in a position where that's been possible. We're getting to the point now, because of some of the cost inflation we're seeing. And just simply with that cost inflation, you look at some of these numbers and you're like, okay, what amount of money is appropriate for a public entity to be spending on this activity? And we're going through that, as you all know, on lots of different activities. This is one where, you know, I think to Councilmember Lynch's question, you know, what are our options? I think the other side of that coin is what target are we shooting toward? And then it's easier for us to give you the options. So I don't know that we can do this completely cafeteria style where we come to you and say, you know, the options for the project are this and, you know, I'm going to choose these things off the menu. I do think we need a little bit of guidance from council in terms of what is the target you want us to hit? So that then we can give you a better set of menu options. I think from a, from an operational budgetary standpoint, how we need this to work at this point, recognizing that we have to approve a budget in the next two meetings. So that's kind of where we are on this. And then the anticipation is that as we go through, looking at each of these phases with the budget that you all have approved for us, we'll be able to go back and have these detailed conversations about what are the pieces that you all want to choose as we go forward.
I would be very much interested in a follow-up private conversation to help with my understanding of how to best answer that question.
Yeah, totally.
It raises more questions for me that I don't know if this meeting setting is the best. I don't want to commenteer everybody's time for my education. But at the same token, I guess, I guess where I'll come back to is a value statement, which is, you know, I, I try my best and strive my best to be a person of my word. And I'm trying right now to wonder where and when I have personally made commitments specific to tennis. When has the city as an entity and institution made specific promises and guarantees with respect to tennis? And how those reconcile with these proposals and this timeline? Again, that can be a conversation for my education after this. I think it is very important for us to keep our promises. I want to make sure that I'm doing that. But one of the promises we all make is to be good fiscal stewards of the city. And so I'd like to schedule up a follow-up with some of you to, to better understand. But also, you know, when I, I look at this flexibility chart and perhaps it's an oversimplification. And I know it's an oversimplification. Maybe the, the fence is a better example, but I too am coming back to, you know, what Councilmember Wakasim did or raised about, you know, these private-public partnerships and what are the potential opportunities for private fundraising or partnership with clubs? What makes it so that we can have investment, but we're not necessarily relying on it from an operational standpoint? I know that's something we've discussed in the context of the community center. So I, this is me opining, however, I, I would like a follow-up conversation that allows me to better understand how I can make sure that I'm fulfilling my promises and being a person of my word while doing it in a way that's very complex when you make promises on multiple things.
Maybe I would chime in on that. I, I think there have been some, I don't want to use the word promises, but assumptions or, or discussions over time. If, if it's, if we can do this, then we'll do that related to tennis. And, and I'm not saying it very well, but at no point has anyone in this organization made it, made a pledge for $2 million court replacement or a $4 million investment in tennis, correct? I, I mean, I, I certainly would, not anybody up here, yeah.
I, I would disagree, Council President King. And when we look at this, let's remember, we were one nanosecond from having this project move forward. We went out to bid, correct? It was a city priority, correct? It came in too high. So it was a city priority. We had it on the books. Had the numbers come in, the thing would have, this project would have been, we would have approved it the next meeting.
Absolutely. If there was one zero less?
So that's the number. That's the number we need to stick at.
750.
No, the number that we had in our budget, the one that we had, where it came in over budget, what was, what was our number that we were looking, we were shooting for?
2.2 billion, I believe.
And that's for 12 courts?
No, that was for three courts in the building. That was the phase that we bid out. We, the, the project we bid out earlier this year was for the replacement of the building, the renovation of three courts and the replacement of the center, central patio area. I believe it was 2.2 million.
If those bids had come in.
But they didn't.
If, if they had, this thing was moving. Would have been a nanosecond. They didn't. Now we're opening it all back up.
Which is all right and all.
Sure, but I'm just talking about where I think the watermark should be. High watermark on that. We were, we were committed to spending that amount on that phase.
I, I'm struggling with the term committed, but okay. I mean, I hear, I understand your point.
We put a lot of work into that proposal. We put a lot of staff time into that proposal and that's the dollar amount we set. If that wasn't commitment, then we wasted a lot of people's time.
Totally fair, yeah. Mr. Kulwitz, yes?
Thank you, President King. Do you have any usage data on the east athletic fields in terms of how many people use those per year? And then what's the rationale for moving that to, imposing a three-year delay on that?
We would have to get back to you on the actual usage of our athletic fields. They are used by our baseball and softball organizations and football. So they are used both east and west collectively with that. The rationale for moving the east and the west is to finish the renovation, for the stormwater renovation that's in place in the area that was disturbed up along Northam Road. Is if we renovate the north, the west fields right now, that'll help get that back to a playable surface. So that was more important than to move over to the east side as was originally scheduled for this year, for, for next year.
Are you, are you talking about a, a three-year delay in, in improvements to the east athletic fields?
So originally we were going to do the east fields first as we were working through the vision plan. As we started going through and doing the stormwater, it, it made complete swit-, sense to switch and go over to the west field. So we, we flip-flopped the two phases, that accounted for part of the delay. And then on top of that, we have always had planned in there a year off in between. You'll notice there's nothing from a capital standpoint for 2025. We wanted to do that for a couple of reasons. One, to just kind of give a break to the park because we knew so much work was being planned. We didn't want people to feel like the park was constantly under construction. And then the other reason was to give time for the fields that we did first to establish turf to be ready to use, to be able to handle the abuse it was going to take before we turned our attention to renovating any other fields in the park. When we did that, kind of the two combined things, along with the delay we're currently dealing with, pushed it out three years.
Let me, just because I want to process this a little more. Was there a piece of legislation in front of us that we turned down relative to this 2.2 million dollars that you're talking about? So nothing bubbled up to us?
We did not come forward because the bids were so far over the budget.
Then council would have considered it, I suppose.
Your anticipation was we were going to start in spring?
This fall.
We would have brought it forward to council to determine to move forward if they came, if they came in closer to the budget. It would have taken council action to authorize a void contract.
As you all can tell, I'm, I'm really struggling with this. I'm struggling with it, with the building in one part. I'm struggling a little less with the building than I am with $2 million for the courts. That's just, that's just me and that's just where I am. I'm not anti-tennis. I've never been anti-tennis. Those numbers, the first time I saw them in the budget book, just, just really jumped out at me. I don't, I would be okay with a $1 million commitment, perhaps in the 2024 budget. We put that in, in there. The tennis community understands that. The tennis community can then use that number to generate a public-private partnership, something like that. But some, something other than a, a $2 million commitment for tennis. I, I just can't get my head around that.
And sorry, not to open the can of worms, I, I'm new here and this is my first, first go at this budget. In scoping this, because you said you had, you had to give it out for bids and then it would have come up to council, does that mean that in last, the last budget, that was what was, like in this terms of flexibility, we've kind of forecasted this out? Is that where those numbers came from in order to try to go out to bid? Okay.
A year ago, when council passed the budget, it had that amount for this year for that phase.
Okay.
Yes.
So that's where this number bubbled in kind of like that last budget cycle, right?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Just from my understanding, but it also doesn't, I mean, the 2 million for the building and the three tennis courts doesn't solve the whole problem, the whole pie, if I understand it, is 4 million, is that right? For, if we're going to do the 12 courts and the, and the building and the site improvements around kind of like the courts? Is that, is that, is that the number holistically?
It gets a little confusing because getting back to Steve's comment, we, we tried to kind of create a little bit of a cafeteria list by doing the big buckets. So really what we have in the current budget, and why don't I flip back to this? In 2023, that 1 million is for six tennis courts. The 1 million that's in the 2023 budget. In the 2024 budget, that phase four is for the remaining six tennis courts, but also the building and then surrounding site work.
So that's 5 million?
So 5 million, but that's not just for the 12 tennis courts. That's for 12 tennis courts, the building, paths, stormwater improvements around those areas. It's, that's for the whole scope of, of reworking that area.
Now, the, the 2024 money is, is recycled from what would have been spent this year on the, or repurposed from what would have been spent this year?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. I, I was looking at it again on here. We had 2.4 million in the last budget. That included the 2.2 million construction costs as well as the 10% contingency and inspection fees that we mentioned earlier. That 2.4 million has not been spent. That was included in this year's budget.
So, so yeah, I guess while I'm, you know, inclined to have more conversation on this, I, I, I would be comfortable with that, what was forecasted for the 2023 budget, which is that million, right? And, and in keeping it there, and let's have further conversation on what happens post there. And if it is, in fact, that's the 1 million that's out there for the community and the tennis community. Understand that we've got to get, we've got to do something around getting the rest of the money. Maybe it, it puts a number out there. But holding that, considering we have two weeks here to kind of decide what we need to do. It's going to be pretty complex to unpack where's what, where, where are we going, what makes sense for flexibility or adjustability and scope to really dive deeply into that. I, I, I don't know that that work can truly be done in few, in good due diligence in the time that we need. But we've already, to borrow Councilmember Bruce's word, that there seems to have already kind of been this promise or commitment a couple of budget cycles ago to this $1 million.
This is the challenge of doing large, complex capital projects in an inflationary environment. It's that, and, you know, and it's going, it, this is going to be at some level an iterative conversation with you all. You're going to give us a budget. We're going to see what we can get for that budget. And then at some level, you all are going to make the value judgment as to whether you think what we can get for the budget you have given us is worth the money.
So I appreciate the work on, if we're talking back to big picture, that you did on all of this, these presentation materials. I had a lot of questions about how does the schedule fit together of what was already going on in Northam Tennis, all those changes, the graphic that we were given with those color coding of green and red and priority and putting this all together. So helpful, thank you. Part of that, those questions I was having was moving things around in the big picture, and that's why I was struggling to put together our budget book and the green and the red color coding, because it's all trade-offs, right? So that's what we're talking about for the tennis courts, too, is what are the trade-offs?
What she said. So I, I appreciate the detailed conversation I think we've got. So I'll talk with Brenton, I'll talk with Council President about kind of how to come back to this. What I'm hearing the discussion that we need to look at is how would we, when we come back on the fifth, we will come back with some feedback on, how would we readjust the CIP back to the budgets that we had, basically coming out of the vision plan? And we'll look at that. Obviously, as always, as any of you have individual questions or want to sit down with Jeff and Debbie and Brent and me and Jackie and whoever, as, as appropriate, we'll be more than willing to kind of pull those meetings together and, and talk through with you all at any level of detail that you want to. We know this is complicated. As I said earlier, this is not, certainly not the last time we're going to be back to you to talk about these issues. Once we get a budget, we'll go out and kind of work that budget to see what our options are to hit it. But that's going to take us some time. And we will be back to you to continue having those conversations. Thank you for the depth, and I do want to compliment these two and Matt for kind of scrambling around. They were all out at a conference last week, too, so emailing back and forth as they were doing things at their conference. So they put a lot of work into this, and I, I do think it, even going through this exercise for me, who's been through it a few times, that you all asking us these questions really helped us clarify and get it down to something that was much more explainable. So thank you for that.
Just to build on that, Jeff and Debbie, you guys always do a great job with these presentations. You really do, yeah. In a, in a challenging topic with a lot of moving parts and a lot of history and a lot of, all of that, you guys really make it as simple as it can be. So thank you both.